Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the Mashpee Planning Board Meeting of Wednesday, November 18th, 2015, 7:00 PM, being held here at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. I'd like to welcome everybody to our hearing tonight, our public meeting, excuse me. If you have an opportunity to address the board, please use our microphone. You are being videoographed and recorded. I invite everybody to join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Approval of minutes. So, it looks like we have the minutes... ...of October...
November 4th.
I have minutes of October 7th. These were approved. Okay. Would you pass that down to Tom? That might be for his folder. You're good with that? I entertain a motion to approve?
(inaudible)
I approve as written.
All in favor? Aye. So, we have a public hearing scheduled for 7:10. Do we know if the project proponent is coming?
Nope. I mean, we know that he's not.
What date has he requested?
The next meeting, so that would be December 2nd.
And just to prep us, I mean, there's nothing on there.
Oh, there is. December 2nd, there's a...
Hi, can the TV audience hear me now? Okay, sounds good. Alright, so there's something on December 2nd?
Yeah, we have the public hearing to name Stores Road.
Okay. Do we have anything on December 16th yet?
No.
Okay. Alright, so we'll deal with that matter at 7:10. Release of road covenants, any news?
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Roberts and it looks like he's probably not going to go ahead with Cypress Circle, but he is going to pursue Fox Hill.
Okay.
Still working on that, so that's why I left it on the agenda, but probably just Fox Hill.
Okay.
Nothing on Silver Leaf?
Silver Leaf? No, I mean, Silver Leaf is what he's got to do to get the release for Fox Hill, as you recall, but...
So, it's my understanding that Charlie, you've given him all the information we need and you're waiting for something from him?
He was going to contact his engineer to get some information. I was out there on the site with him, explained what it was that I was expecting to see, what the design generally would consist of, and encouraged him to have his engineer call me if he wanted to. I know who it is, so I'm commending the work of the engineer that he's proposing to use. But I haven't heard anything, so...
Okay. Alright, so let's keep that on the agenda. Next one is New Seaberry Properties LLC. Location is off Cross Road. So, release of road covenants for portion of the cottages at New Seaberry Phase 2 and release a performance bond for Phase 1.
So, right now, we have a covenant in place for Phase 2 and we have a cash security for Phase 1. You have two letters from Charlie there. One of them deals with a reduced number, David, a reduced number for Phase 1. We're hoping to get it all back, but it's like there's a little bit left to do.
Okay.
Charlie's suggesting with the 50% that we retain $29,250 out of the security that we're holding there.
So, John, are you here to represent New Seaberry?
Yes. My name is John Koch, I'm project manager, New Seaberry, and I have the letters from Charlie. And basically, what we'd like to do is get the money released from Phase 1 and then hopefully use that and apply it to Phase 2, so that I have the lot released.
So, Charlie, if I understand this correctly, your recommendation is to return $207,070.95?
Correct. Well, that's not exactly the way it works. I mean, there is, we're holding $176,000 plus interest currently, and what, in effect, what we're doing is retaining the $29,250. He'll get everything above that that's left, so...
That would be the motion.
Mary, this was my October 1st letter, which is referenced in that letter for Phase 1. Just so you can see what the document said, what the items were, 1 through 7. So, the only thing that's left is 1 through 1, 5, and 7.
Oh, I see. And the items to be retained add up to $29,250?
Yes, with the 50%.
Plus 50%. It was, the amount to be retained is $19,500 plus 50%. Gives you the $29,250.
Okay. Okay. So, you agreeable to that, John?
Yes.
And everybody else?
Yep.
So, we would need to make a motion. I guess we would be retaining $19,500 plus 50%.
Twenty-nine.
Totally.
Twenty-nine, two fifty.
Make a motion to release the covenant and retain $29,250 for the remaining items, number 1, item number 1, item number 5, and item number 7.
And just for the record, the covenant has already been released, Dennis, so it's just reducing the security to that amount.
Security to $29,250.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
And if we can pass that around and get your signatures on the second set of signature lines there for the next reduction. What will happen is I'll bring that to the treasurer and he will cut a check for whatever's left over and send it off to whoever's listed on that sheet there, New Seaberry LLC or Baywater, whatever it is. Yeah. So, you'll get that money back eventually, but in order to cover the Phase 2, you're going to have to come up with a new amount, obviously significantly larger than the 29. Based on the letter, it's 163-something for Phase 2, so...
(inaudible)
Mm-hmm.
Two hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, well, I mean, you can, you'll get the money back, but I mean, we can't just keep it. We've got to put it in a new security deposit, so... Yeah, yeah, so it'll have to be some exchange of checks, I guess.
Okay, so that was the first part of this item. The second part is...
Is my signature at all? No.
It's a release of road covenants for portion of the cottages at New Seaberry Phase 2. So, Charlie, do you want to start with that or have John start with it?
Doesn't matter to me.
Hi, so as I said earlier, we're now talking about Phase 2 and would like to get the lot's release and covenant. And Charlie has put together the cost of construction and took the multiplier of about 1.5 and has come up with this figure there. And we've done a substantial amount of work to date, and so it's reflected in this letter. And so, it has been reduced down a total amount. That's how we come up with the total of $168,000.
Six ninety-three fifty, so the base amount is 109,129, plus the 50% totals, 163, six ninety-three fifty.
Which we will supply to town and then for the lot releases.
Does everybody agreeable to that? Okay, so...
And I will talk to the treasurer, see if there's a way to just, you know, move the money around rather than having to get a new check, but as far as I know, we'll have to start over again. We'll try to work that out.
(inaudible) whatever the town treasurer, however he wants to handle it, we're fine.
Okay, so they have prepared a release of covenant document here that needs to get recorded. What I'll do is, if we can get your signatures, it needs a notary, so maybe everybody but you can, if you get your notary stuff, can do that. Oh, yeah, you'll need a motion to release the road covenant in exchange for a performance guarantee in the amount of $163,693.50.
Are you in motion?
Make a motion to release the road covenant for the remainder of the town, that's one.
It's not a remainder, it's, this is a...
Nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
Six ninety-three.
One hundred and sixty-three thousand, six ninety...
Six hundred and ninety-three, fifty cents.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So...
So, I'll pass around the...
I'll not write your signature, so are you signing this voluntarily for its stated purpose?
Yeah. Four definitely, well, three, I guess, will do.
I'll have to notarize it. My stamp's at work, John, so I'll have to notarize it and drop it into the mailbox.
I have to bring in the money anyway.
Okay, alright.
Try to work that all out.
I'm after chair. One second, one. Yeah. I'm not going to sign because I'm, I'll sign in front of a note.
There it is. Oh, sure. I can actually print it out in color anyway, so...
There you go. So, the project's going well?
Yes, it is.
Good.
Thank you. And also sent to Tom, I don't know if he's, but the last time I was before you, we were also looking to get the bond reduced at Oceanfront. And at that time, the board wanted to see an Asbilly plan and a letter from the county engineer, not the county engineer, and we had submitted it. I thought I was going to read back to you earlier, but time's flying.
I don't have anything on that, do you?
Well, the only thing, I got a copy of the letter from BSS Design. John sent it to me today with a copy of a plan that they have done as an Asbilly. I didn't get a copy of your original request, which was in your email though, John. It was, you had said there was an original request for the reduction?
Yes.
And that didn't come through. There was only two things on the attachments. This is, this is the letter and it's a reduction of the Asbilly plan. It's the only thing I can print on my small printer. Okay.
I didn't bring that file with me because it didn't realize, and it's not on the agenda, so I didn't realize I was going to be doing that.
Perhaps we can revisit this when Tom has a chance to get the file and go through the minutes, because we had a little bit of discussion and...
Can you, can you put that on the December 2nd?
Yeah, yeah.
Would you be available, December 2nd? I mean, I'm trying to keep December 2nd.
So, that'd be, is this a full release of everything?
No, it would be a partial release.
Okay, so, reduction of performance guarantee.
Redo of the public guarantee.
Okay. Alright, so that will be on our December 2nd agenda. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the public hearing scheduled for 7:10. The applicant is SGF Realty Trust, 424 Whiting's Road. It's for definitive plan approval for a 3-lot cluster subdivision and a special permit approval for a 3-lot cluster subdivision. It was continued from November 4th, 2015, and there's been a request from the project proponent to reschedule, continue this public hearing to our next available public hearing, which would be December 2nd at...
Well, we have a 7:10 hearing on the naming of Stores Road, so it's probably, depending on Dennis, won't take long. Or not.
Seven twenty?
Seven twenty? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
Where is that?
The Tom, the minute.
There's all that stuff.
So, I have, I have these, the release. I'll notarize them and put them in the mail slots.
Okay.
Are you ready for the next item?
Sure.
Okay, special permits. Applicant is the North Bridge Companies. Location is Great Neck Road South, Accessus Map 74, Block 17 and 27, Map 75, Block 10. Special permit application for 70 units assisted living facility. Requires a vote for mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission as a DRI.
Indeed. So, this special permit was filed on Monday with the town clerk. Charlie has a full set of the full-scale plans and the stormwater report and the special permit application. I'm not sure how much you guys want now, or do you want to just wait to get your stuff so, you know, misplace it or something before it goes back to the Cape Cod Commission or your choice?
Can I, do you keep it at this point?
Yeah.
Did they send anything to you electronically?
They gave me a disk, and there are, because some of the things are too big to do email on, I can probably send you some parts of that electronically.
It might be nice to just give us the ones that are the most simplest plans, so we can try to, you know, if we want to go by it, you can try to figure out conceptually how it's going to look like.
Yeah.
That'd be great, at your convenience.
This is actually their special permit application package, and then there were one by seventeen thousand.
So, watch your emails for some type of plan from Tom.
Okay.
Alright, so...
What we need to do is, this is a mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission because of the size of it, and they've already filed all of their plans with the commission. All we need to do is get the board to vote to make the referral and get the chair to sign it and send it out.
Now, our, does the commission want to review this together or are we going to...
No, no, it's just a normal, they review it and we get it back. But don't forget, Charlie's on the case. Charlie will be keeping an eye on. He's already made comments, they've already made revisions to the plans that went to the commission based on Charlie's comments. He's got a new set of the plans now as revised, so you've authorized him to work on this while it's at the commission.
That's awesome.
The other thing that they've done is they've scheduled themselves to attend the plan review and design review meetings, which are now formal because of special permits been filed. I think that'll probably be on December 16th or 15th rather than the 1st. I'm not sure, because it wasn't specified in the email we got, but there's a heavy agenda on the 1st, so I think they'd rather do it on the 15th. And the idea there being, aside from the recommendations of the board, is that those will go to the Cape Cod Commission as well and be able to be input to their process.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to make a mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission of this project.
By the way, by the way, he's the proponent, I'm not the proponent. He was supposed to be here to say that stuff, but I'm sorry.
Oh, would you like to address the board?
Glad to introduce myself. My name is Brian Yugeishen, I'm a professional engineer from BSC Group and I'm representing the North Bridge Companies in this project. So, I look forward to working with all of you in the future and already started working with Charlie.
That's great.
Seen his comments and, as Tom said, addressed some of his comments to start out with, so...
Well, I'm sure with Charlie on board, it's going to fly right through.
We all hope so, right?
Well, just so you know, for the record, Mary, I had a preliminary plan, which I
emailed comments to BSC for, but I just got the plans tonight to see exactly what was done, so I have no idea what got submitted to the Cape Cod Commission. We'll find out.
Okay, so this would be a mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission as a DRI, which is a development of regional impact. Importance? I like that better. I like that way better, okay. So, entertain a motion?
Make a motion to refer it to the Cape Cod Commission.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, do I sign this?
Yep. Print your name, sign your name, and date it.
I'll use my whole name for this one. It's going to be in some file of the Cape Cod Commission forever. Scanned in, put on the web as well.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Good luck with everything.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Start a discussion on status of parking, a parking plan and special permit, I'm sorry, yeah, special permit site plan at 168 Industrial Drive.
Alright, I actually, after my water district meeting yesterday, drove through the property, and what they have done is they put up the signs that were requested.
That's good.
One of the signs says more parking in the rear, one of the signs that says more parking that way as you come in off of Industrial Drive, and I forget what the third sign is, but there's a, there were three signs. But they haven't done anything, oh, they have put up signs that say no parking on the easterly gravel areas along the edge of the, but nothing's been done to restore the landscaping there, and they haven't done anything to edge the gravel spaces where people definitely were parking on the gravel yesterday.
I went by the other day and every space was taken and they were parking on the shoulders of commercial space.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Depends on the time. I was there by around 2 o'clock, 2:30. But at least they put up the signs, but they haven't done anything with the physical, the gravel or the re-landscaping.
Okay, so we'll leave it on the agenda?
I would think so, just to, I don't know what happens this time of year, if you can, are able to do that, but you would, they probably can't get landscaping growing, but they can probably do the work to sort of harden up the edges of those gravel areas.
Okay, let's keep it on the agenda. It looks like they've made some progress, so that's good. That's good. Reports from design review. Community Preservation Committee in your pocket, you will see the planning board and the Mashpee Conservation Commission's application to the Community Preservation Committee for a trail and a footbridge connecting Mashpee Commons to the high school over the Quashnet River. Charlie went out to the site on very short notice, I really appreciate that, Charlie, looked at the site and drafted up a budget. I think I added a little bit of money to it for the trail construction, so it totals to 84,800. And I also added $2,000 for construction oversight, which was basically for you.
Okay.
So, anyways, the meeting before, on this item, Drew and Tom are going to be able to present this to the Community Preservation Committee on December 8th at 7:00. It's a Tuesday, I don't know if David's available. So, I was hoping that Dennis could come.
Yeah. I'll make sure.
It's December 8th at 7:00, and Joe and Rob, if you'd like to come, that would be great. They'll be a member of the commission.
Where, in this room yet?
You know, it's either going to be in this room or sometimes they're downstairs. But if they can get this room, they book it. The other item on the agenda is the Recreation Department's request for a golf, a disc golf course. Might be kind of interesting, just, yes!
Frisbee.
Yeah, they have, my son used to go up there, pick great music cards up there and a couple of them.
I guess they're like super fun and people love it, and it's like all ages can do it and all different kinds of, you know, levels of accuracy, which is good. So, that'll be an interesting meeting. I, I am, you know, I haven't even looked at their whole application. That's a, yeah, good point.
It sounded like they wanted to put it on conservation land somewhere.
Well, it's Mary, it's Mary Bradbury, you know, if you had some ideas about that because of this, maybe you should give her a holler. She's the Director of Recreation and she's doing a great job, so, and she's very open to new ideas and talking to the public.
And Drew is a big disc golf player, so...
Oh, that is so, going to be so interesting.
Yeah.
I'm hoping, I have a day off next week, I'm hoping to go to the resource office. The Bonsville County Government has a resource office for getting grants and funds. So, we think that there, Drew McManus thinks that there's other sources of funding, because part of this plan is that the planning board would seek out and start funding applications for other sources. So, hopefully, the total that we bring to town meeting, you know, is less. And also, DCR has a program to create trails and footbridges, and Drew thought that that would be another source and that he, off the top of his head, he didn't think that we missed their deadline yet, because that's once a year. But anyways, onward. Is there any questions from you guys?
When, when did you say your meeting was?
December 8th at 7:00. Charlie, did you get my email? I had, there was an email a while back, and if everything went well, could you come to this as well?
December 8th?
December 8th?
Yeah.
I think they might have a lot of questions about how you came to the cost. I know that Tom told me very briefly that he thought there would have to be a significant amount of work around the banks, and that's why it would be expensive.
Yeah, because the, the dykes that are there are very narrow. I mean, they were essentially walking dykes. They weren't built wide enough to take any kind of a vehicle.
Oh.
Basically, a footpath that's very narrow at the top, but the dykes would need some work in order to put in any kind of a foundation that would support the bridge.
And we want to go and use that area because that would mean less disturbance of the banks, right? We don't want to...
Yeah, because as the photographs showed, there were flumes in both these old locations.
Okay.
And so, you've got approaches to the flumes from both sides. However, they are very narrow, it's going to take a little work to clear all the brush, make the path so that it's walkable, and then the foundations on each side of the flume structure itself should really be looked at to see what it contains. Typically, when they built for a cranberry bog, they, they built the flume structures and then they packed a lot of peat and so forth up against the flume itself to prevent the water from getting through. It was like a stop log so that the water wouldn't go from the bog through the dike. We don't know what that dike really contains in terms of material.
Okay.
So, you'd have to explore that with some test borings or something or other to figure out what's there. So, that would take a little bit of work. In either case, doesn't matter which location.
Yeah, and those are the only two locations, because you've got to remember, this is a cranberry bog, so the dykes are the only way to get across unless you build up like your 500-foot bridge over the whole bog, so that's why there's two locations specifically.
So, it would, it would take a...
That would be an important fact to bring up.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And if you had to widen the dike right against where the support was, there would be a very minimal amount of material that perhaps would spill over onto the old bog itself. Those cranberry bogs, once they grow up, they're a wetland in terms of conservation. But there are some provisions where I think it's less than 500 square feet or something like that of disturbance. There's no replication has to be done and so forth.
That's right.
And anything under 5,000 square feet, that's another provision, and I don't remember the details of that. But there clearly would have to be some work done on the approaches to where the bridge would end up.
As you know, David, Tom, and I met with the Conservation Commission, and they are the owners of this, of the property where the footbridge would go. So, that's why we put them first as the name of the applicant. So, and yeah, Drew is going to invite a member of the commission or commission.
So, that's December 8th?
December 8th at 7:00.
Okay.
And that'd be, that'd be great. This would be something that would be a new type of project for the committee to look at, so I expect a lot of questions. You know, it'd kind of be like, you know, disc golf course, you know? Like, what is that? But I guess Drew, just like Dennis and Tom, have had... But I guess Drew, just like Dennis and Tom, have had a lot of experience building trails and stuff like that, so. And that's my report.
Will the background reveal that it's part of a bigger scheme of things for?
I'm hoping.
Be a kind of a standalone piece to the Committee, Board?
What Tom did for the presentation to, and David, but David won't be there, so it'll fall upon Tom, he, he went through the whole Greenway concept.
Well, that's good, yeah.
And...
Big map.
And they, they received that informational kind of...
But they know, this is not just a one-time thing. It's just, they've got Charlie.
Can, can you get a cement truck down there, or, you know, how, so how do you get a pour there? You're going to have to pour some.
There would have to be, and one of the, one possibility would be to use some sort of a screw anchor mechanism that you can actually bore into the ground and you can almost do it by hand.
Yeah.
You might be able to, you might be able to get a Bobcat-sized machine there, and depending on which site is chosen, you might be able to get a cement truck in there, but it would take a little bit of work in either case. But you, you couldn't take the cement truck out on the dike.
So those pouring things you're talking about, that's, more of the soil than salt.
Correct, correct.
If you have bad soil behind it, you can't use that.
No, no, you've got to have something that really will anchor it.
Yeah, okay.
So you've got to find out what's there.
I don't know if I told you, but it's my understanding that Charlie chose this type of bridge because it can be dismantled, carried in, and assembled on-site?
You can get it in pieces, and they're all fiberglass, so you put them on your shoulder and you haul them in, and you put them together on-site, and you don't need any cranes or anything like that to put them in place, you can just do it with hand labor.
And we're hoping that hand labor will be something like a miracle?
Yeah.
In us.
If you... Grab down a model gravel ton.
What?
And you did that trail down there.
Oh, yeah. Rural barrels and carpeting and all kinds of stuff, yeah.
Yeah, if you go to the, if you go to the...
That was when we were younger.
Find the page there.
On your, your ET Techno.
Yeah. ET Technics?
Yeah.
If you go to that website, you'll see the pictures, like, are on the second page. But those are fiberglass bridges, and there are pictures of people actually putting them together, standing basically in the, in the river and hauling the pieces by hand, putting them together section by section. You need somebody on each side to sort of...
Yeah.
Put the spans over, but once they're done, it's all by hand.
So interesting, because it doesn't, like, you told me, I'd never believe that was a fiberglass bridge unless you told me. It looks great.
Yeah.
They're great.
Those are only examples. The one that I picked was a four-foot wide one, and you can get them wider, but four feet, you're going to strip kind of vehicles.
Yeah, that's absolutely what you need for pedestrian and not, you wouldn't want somebody to put a heavy vehicle on that fiberglass bridge, I don't think.
You can either have a pressure-treated deck, or you can make it with that plastic material.
That is going to last the longest.
Yeah.
Thanks. After I put that plastic, after I put that puppy together, I'm not going back out there. That's great. That's great. All right, that's the Community Preservation Committee report, environmental oversight.
No meeting.
No meeting.
No, just looking at the, I just had a question on the construction of the, the bridge. Charlie, and I was wondering why, if there were stainless steel mounting clips, why are the hot-dip galvanized steel bolts connecting? Because, you know, you have...
Galvanic.
Yes, it's the nobility of metals.
Electrolysis you're talking about?
Yeah, and what will happen is the stainless steel will eat away at the bolts, because...
I don't know whether it'll eat away at the stainless steel or not, if it was...
No, no, the stainless steel will, is a higher nobility than the galvanized.
That's something that I could certainly check on, I don't have an answer for you.
Yeah, it's, it's...
It may be that the hot-dip galvanized bolts are what puts the fiberglass together. It may not be that they're, it may be that the, the clips themselves may have a stainless bolt along with it, I don't know. That's something that could be checked.
Yeah, well, I, I would just see whether the galvanized and the stainless are...
I didn't go into an awful lot of detail talking with people. I put together some basic information, which you can email them to, and they send back you the, the information of how much the actual bridge itself would cost you, and so that's what I did.
The hot-dip galvanized is good, I mean, that's a...
Oh, absolutely.
A good...
But I think those particular pieces of hardware for the, for the structure itself, I don't know that it was intended to anchor the stainless steel, but that's certainly verifiable. You can do that.
Yeah, that was, that's why I was reading that.
Lucky we have engineers in the room.
And this was only one idea, I mean, there may be others out there that'll like it.
Right. And, and plus, if it's going over the three-foot roadway, the four-foot, it's going to be resting on there, right?
Well, what you're going to have to do is put some sort of a footing in place. That's as wide, or perhaps a little wider than the bridge itself.
Yeah.
And that's got to be set in place, and then you set the bridge structure on top of that.
Yeah.
So if you look at the second picture there, it sort of shows a concrete, sort of a slab built up with stone and everything around it.
Yeah.
The first one, I think, is more typical of what these approaches might look like.
No, it looks good.
Okay, any other questions for Charlie?
No.
Okay. Historic District Commission?
No meeting. No meeting, just thought I'd let you know that, though, that the Chair of the Historic District Commission and myself and some of the historical Commission members have put together a, a signage working group towards developing signage at historic locations in town, possibly, in the, in the past, Earl Mills had talked about, you know, bronze plaques, your classic, you know, historic site things, but we're probably looking more like plastic signs with photos and things like that, and, and printed information on the sites. Just at the beginning of that, we had our first meeting earlier in the week, our meeting again in a couple of weeks, but, so the idea is, aside from specific locations in the Historic District and entering Mashpee Historic District signs at three locations, two ends of 130 and over here in Great Neck Road, there are other places in town that are also of historic significance, so we're looking at the whole town as well. So there is some activity going on related to the Historic District, but the Historic Commission, District Commission in terms of regulatory activity has been nothing other than one sign-off this year that was of non-applicability.
That's awesome. I know that there are, there are some other signs in town that go up, community preservation signs, I think the, doesn't the schoolhouse have some type of signage?
It probably does, but those are more like carved wood signs or carved plastic signs. We're talking about smaller signs with a lot more, you know, smaller print, basically a pedestrian-level explanation signs.
All I'm suggesting is that if there's other signs that are like the ones you're looking at, you could try to match the style.
Yeah, there's, there is no style for any of those things, I mean, the CPA sign is totally different than any of the other signs around here, so these will all match a style, but...
Even if you use, the CPA has a, has a yellow, has a light yellow background, just because what, what bugs me is that different people put signs up and they're all different, you know, it's not a, what you basically want to do is, is brand stuff, you know what I mean? Like, have as many signs, look the same, or have a common element, so you know that they're all from the town, as you're, in your, you're in the preliminary design. But even if you use the, you know, if you're talking about having pictures, if you have a, need to choose a background color, you could pick that background color that the CPA uses, that, that light, light yellow, which I think is very pretty.
I'm pretty sure these are basic white, but that's the only yellow sign in town. I mean, I don't know why they picked that yellow, because every other sign we have is brown, so.
If you're going to get a bunch of other signs and there's one that doesn't match, just get a sign.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just my suggestion.
They'll be much smaller and, and, you know, they're not going to be like giant signs that say, you know, blah, blah, blah.
And these could be, because we're eventually going to need signage for the Greenway. So, you know, I'm hoping that those signs match some type of, you know what I mean?
Well, those, yeah, maybe, those are going to be more like trail markers, which you've already got around town for the Greenway, not, these historic, these are more like, you know, if you go down to Webner Headquarters, you'll see displays there, you know, relative to various items, and that's actually where some of the members of the committee get their inspiration for the type of material and, and actually the company that does those signs at home, over at Webner, so. But any case, we'll keep you informed on how that's going.
That's what you said, all right. MMR?
Uh, time.
I think our Greenway project report was made when I, right? When I made the CPAC report?
I just, just, I don't know if I told you last time that, you know, Mashpee Commons Insurance Company was okay with the idea of a license, then we brought it to our insurance, MIAA, and, and they were giving us a hard time, even though Town Council's okay with it. Last time I talked to the Chief was basically, we're going to go ahead and do it. So I don't know if anything's being done, especially that I won't have, I'll probably have to kickstart something, because the Chief's got so many things going on that he's always got to be reminded to do something. Recall him the Chief. Absolutely.
Oh, no.
It's a lot easier than Town Manager, he'll always be the Chief, yeah.
That's great. All right, new business, billing for Land Court Report, a subscription renewal?
Yep, get that here, $232, same as last year, that's the, all the Land Court cases that keep me up on land law.
Land Court, that's good, sir. We know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Waterway licenses, Mashpee Neck, Marina, and 63 Waterline Drive. Correspondence, Eliza Cox, copy of DRI application submitted to the Cape Cod Commission for self-Cape Village Building F1 demolition, et cetera.
So if anybody wants to see any of that stuff, I've got it here in the box, but that's not something we usually distribute or analyze.
Okay. Make a motion, entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no other items.
Is there? There, oh, there it is. Okay, just waiting to get that back.
No. I have a motion on the floor to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.